Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A. Disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regular Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, July the first, 2025. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaf.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting and all comments received shall be read into the record. We'll begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself, followed by an invocation from Pastor Sean Piper. So if you'll stand, please, and join me. Hand over your hearts and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, on this week that we celebrate our independence, we thank you that we are indeed independent as a nation, and we thank you for what this nation still offers to those who are citizens. We thank you for our city, and as we celebrate the Fourth, I pray that any danger of fire would be mitigated, and that the firemen would be effective in keeping us safe, and that we pray for our policemen, that they would be kept safe. Help them be courageous and do their jobs well. Also, thank you for these men and women who run our city. May they be given wisdom by you, may they be blessed by you, and may they even be able to experience joy in their work, because then it will be better for the rest of us. Help us all to be good citizens. We pray all these things in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, may we have roll call to you?
Mayor North.
Here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Okay.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
Councilmember Shaverah.
Here.
And Mayor Proten Bryant is absent with notice.
All right, very good. Let's get this set up. All right, first item on this evening's agenda is citizen request public comments. We don't have any? Well, that made that that much easier. All right, item number two is council statements non-action. Councilman Shaverah, I'm gonna begin with you this evening, sir.
Yes, thank you. I just want to speak on two things. You know, as we do the pledge allegiance, I often catch myself just staring at the flag, but I want to remind us what that flag represents. What I think of is I think of soldiers. I think of the males and the females, you know, American citizens of various ethnicities that are across the world, and making sure that we're safe, and making sure that we sleep safely at night. So as the Fourth of July comes, you know, we're looking forward to spending time with family members and friends and the community, but I do wish that we all take a moment and honestly think about all those brave men and women across the world, especially what's going on right now around the world, and think about what they're experiencing. Think about what they are doing to make sure that we get to practice our Independence Day safely. And then secondly, again, Independence Day is coming up, and we understand that people get a little excited with fireworks, and I would urge you to ask yourself, is it worth the risk of playing with those fireworks and having a disastrous injury for yourself, your family, or the community? So please be careful and enjoy our Independence Day. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Cryer.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we have Fourth of July coming up, just to piggyback on our Councilman Shaverah, is that it's been a long tradition, over 250 years with the Fourth of July through our revolution we had in 1776, and when we won the war against the British, our founding fathers says we must every year celebrate Fourth of July with cannons and guns and all, whatever's available to make all the noise loud so everybody can hear it, the bells are ringing and everything, to let everybody know about our founding new country. A new, the word they used was experiment, and it worked real well. Our founding fathers had a very intense debate of what form of government should we have in our country. They look at all different ones, and they come to the conclusion that we are a republic, a constitutional republic ruled by a rule of law, and it's not a democracy. They hated democracy. They didn't want one democracy. The only time we got close to democracy was come to voting, where the majority rule. But other than that, we've always had through history. Now, as time passes and stuff, you start hearing people talking about we're a democracy, we gotta do this and that. You hear a lot of that, but yes, we do, but mostly we don't. But it protects us individually, and we need to follow our constitution and not differ from it, because we have to go back to our founding fathers what their intentions were, and they've had the best document that they wrote, and they gave their lives to do it, and a lot of them were very wealthy, they lost their wealth, and to give to our country to get it started, and it prevailed. Now, you see a movement, unfortunately, I'm very happy I'm here in TAF, that we have our Fourth of July celebration with fireworks and everything involved, but many cities in our county is quitting Fourth of July, not having it at all, and a lot, all over the nation, they're getting less and less celebration of Fourth of July, that we're losing that tradition, and they're using words and stuff not to have it. Now they're talking about a boycott of Fourth of July. Why in the heck they want to boycott, when we have heroes just like right here in TAF that fought for us and died for us, let me see if I can find it here, but we have a lot of heroes, anyway, we have a lot of heroes in this town here that died for us and served our country in dignity and pride, and keep us free, and that's what makes this town great. We don't forget our military. We don't forget our flag, and we are very much proactive and passing up our traditions and keep it going. And we're one of the few countries really, that really put out our independence every year. A lot of them don't celebrate the flag like we do. A lot of countries, it's the only thing you see on government buildings only. We're one of the very few countries that have it on every post office, government buildings, individual homes, businesses that we have out there because we proudly support our flag and the meaning of our flag and the meaning of our republic. And I just want to bring it out there because I see it slipping away, and we're definitely a divided country, and I don't want to see us going to socialism or communism. It's, it is not a good, because I know what it is. I lived in it for about 10 years, what socialism is behind the iron curtain, and it's not very pretty what you go through, and I just don't want to see us slipping. So I'm very proud that we have what we have in this country here, and I hope we have a country that would keep our constitution and our values straight on that, and that's all I have to say on Fourth of July. Free. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Waldrop.
Well, I got just a little short announcement that our ex-council chairman, Jerry Gibby, his celebration of life will be the 13th of this month, 11:30 at the fort, so those don't get the information and you'd like to come, I'd like to see you there. The other thing, as I made the meeting to the League of Cities, I got there a little early and I wanted to go in and use the bathroom. I was, it'd been a long drive, and I thought, well, shoot, but they were open, so I went in. Lady greeted me and says, get you a glass there and get you some wine, and they were going around the museum. That's where the meeting was. I was very impressed of that. Military, for instance, was revolution all the way up. It was, they had the stuff there. It was, I highly recommend if anybody gets a chance, they're in too, Larry, to go to it, check it out, and besides that, I won the big prize there that night of four concert tickets to a place of my own, choice of my own. The one that was the very next few days was Clint Black, but that was too early, but I was a lucky one, so had a good time. Thank you.
Good. Did you hold out for the Taylor Swift concert ticket? I'm just curious.
It wasn't there yet.
All right. I want to bring something. This is part of Dave's College of Obscure Knowledge, so I want to share something with you all. Quite common. Dave had to go, I had to replace a refrigerator, you know, it's a machine you keep for a while, and I had to do it. So I went shopping, and when you go shopping for any appliance, and this is a federal requirement, this document is a federal document, comes from the United States government, can't be removed from the item until such time it is purchased, and only the purchaser can remove it, and it tells you approximately what it's going to cost to run this document, or I'm sorry, this item, which is a refrigerator. So it tells me that they anticipate it will use 632 kilowatts, kilowatt hours of energy over the course of a year, and based on the average cost of electricity in the United States of America, that should cost $76. Okay, so, all right, I get that. Well, here I am in California, and I'm thinking, well, they've got a scale here from $74 to $104, and I'm wondering where we'll fall. So I started doing a little bit of math. This is the average, and it's correct based on 12 cents a kilowatt hour, which is national average. In Bullhead City, however, with all costs incurred, it's eight cents kilowatt hour in the beginning, but it's about 10 cents, so it should cost me per year $63.20. All right, national average, it'll cost about $81.68. Here again, the buyer beware, right? So you need to know approximately what it's going to cost, but this is where it gets rather startling, and I need your help here. I want you to stand up here. So, okay, so stand up and hold that. So there it is, the energy guide, says right there, on the average, it's going to cost 76 bucks, but we live in California, so in California, it doesn't cost 76 bucks. That's $100. That's $150. That's $200. That's $250. That's $290.72. Based on what electricity costs right now in City of TAF, it's not the $63 a year that will cost in Bullhead City, nor is it the $81 it'll cost on the average to the United States of America right here because of California's climate or nation-leading climate regulations and policies that I think in the PG&E commercials, they say we've got to continue to provide dependable, affordable energy. So for those of you who are curious, the rest of the country enjoys that affordable energy. Right here, we enjoy that. So, just a little something. This is to scale because I measured that, and so I kind of had to add a few pieces of paper to get it there, but anyway, I just wanted to share that with everybody. So next time you go buy something, if you're curious where you're going to land, now you know. Okay, enough refrigerator business for the evening.
So Mayor, you're saying I've got longer extension cords?
Yes, very long. Okay. As with the rest of the city council, I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Let us not forget the sacrifices that are necessary for this country to continue and our quality of life and our way of life continue. Be cognizant of your fireworks, like Councilman Shaverah said. Do not let an evening of fun and celebration turn into a disaster. Right here in this community, was it two nights ago, that there was an explosion, somebody making homemade fireworks, and it was a horrible injury to the individual, and the house burned down, and a lot of other bad things happened. So fire's not a good thing, and if the chief was here, the fire chief, I'd ask him to talk about it, but anyway, be cognizant of it. It's going to be hot, so drink plenty of fluids. If you drink too many alcoholic beverages, have somebody else there to give you a ride home. All right, everybody enjoy your Fourth of July. God bless America.
Yeah.
Next up, department reports, item number three. Hello, Yvette.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Quick report out. A response received from your last agenda request where we were requested to reach out to Cal Fire in regards to coming and maybe speaking with the council regarding the fire hazard severity zone maps. Well, they replied with an informational email that basically gave us a link to the maps and telling us that the local responsibility area would be addressed in there, and if we wanted specific information for our area to reach out to Kern County Fire Department, and they also said if you wanted information regarding insurance and how it might affect insurance, to contact the Department of Insurance. So that is your response from Cal Fire on your request.
All right, very good. Well, that was in-depth of them, so thank you very much for reaching out.
It's called passing a book.
Yeah.
Literally.
Okay, do we have any other department reports? Seeing none. City manager statements. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. No statements tonight.
All right. City Attorney's statements this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No statement.
All right, thanks, sir. We don't have it on here for planning department reports. Do we have any reports this evening? I saw, obviously. Okay, very good. No planning department. Item number six, future agenda requests for this evening, gentlemen?
No.
Seeing none. We'll roll right into the consent calendar, items seven through 11.
All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none. Those items are, item number seven, which would be the minutes for June the 17th, 2025. the 17th, 2025. Item number eight, the payment of bills, some $356,000 worth. Item number nine, accept the only bid and award the packaged microgrid equipment pre-selection for the transit electrification project to West Gen Solutions Incorporated. Recommendation here is a motion to accept the bid, award the project, and to approve an agreement with West Gen Power Solutions, Inc., for the packaged microgrid equipment pre-selection for the transit electrification project, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Item number 10, authorization to submit a regional surface transportation, RSTP, application to Kern Cog for the rehabilitation of East Kern Street from First Street to Williams Street. Recommendation here is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing the Filing of an Application for Regional Surface Transportation Program, RSTP, Funding and Committing the Necessary Local Match and Stating the Assurance to Complete the Project," and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15061B3. Lastly, item number 11 is an agreement with California State Controller's Office, SEO, to prepare the required annual street report. Recommendation is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the professional services agreement with California State Controller, and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
No.
Nope.
Hearing none at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items seven through 11.
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, I have a motion and a second, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaverah.
Yes.
Mayor North.
Yes, and that's approved on a four oh vote, thank you, gentlemen. That brings us to the close of our open session. We will be going into closed section for three items: A, annual performance evaluation of the city attorney, Government Code Section 54957; B, annual performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957, City Manager; C, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A, Taft Union High School versus the City of Taft. We are going to adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of two Taft residents who lived together, made a life together, and then passed from this life in very close proximity to one another, and that would be Luis and Jerry Gibby, which, Councilman Waldrop, if I'm not mistaken, sir, did you serve on the council with Jerry Gibby?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So if you'll look at the monitor, and you were talking about the celebration of life for them.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be held at the fort?
Yes, it is. Very nice.
Jerry and Luis Gibby made Taft their home, and they raised their children here, and they made their careers here, and they were involved, and they were a part of our community, like we're talking about, Jerry was a part of the City Council, they didn't just reside here, they lived here. So, if you know them, then you are smiling too with them, so God bless them, and hopefully God will wrap his arms around their family, I know they'll be missing them both, and if you can and you care to, please be a part of their celebration of life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This council is in closed session.